Do we have a school where you pledge the pardon on there? That is what our mercy. You hate to lose it.
I guess whoever speaks this.
Are we up and running?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This call is being ordered. It's Tuesday, July 25th, 2017. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes are reports received and filed?
None.
Okay. Commissioner, committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings, events.
Samaritan Center dinner Thursday night. Guess that's at Capitol Plaza. And the leadership meeting Friday's canceled.
Mm-hmm.
Do the radio at Dellen here on Sunday.
What time?
My Dellen, you John. I'll be missing Call Dog.
You got a call in?
You would be kind enough not to listen that day. Nine o'clock, I'll be expecting a couple of calls.
Write that down.
The fair starts next week, so. About it, term next week, Tuesday.
We're supposed to have a safety committee meeting Thursday, but it got canceled.
Yes.
That's all I got.
Okay.
My week.
Tomorrow I got my bank board meeting. Thursday, there's a chamber report kickoff Samaritan Center. Friday, we're doing a Moody rating conference call. Saturday, the Knights Columbus barbecue for Special Olympics is out at Schultz's. And then a sidewalk sale Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, so you can come over and.
If you got a driveway sale, let me know because I need to work on my driveway.
I got that one over there on Dunkland.
Does that mean stay away from downtown?
No. You know, and if we have any surplus, we could be a part of it. We could put it out front, you know, and put. We have anything?
Jail toilets, can we put those out there or are used?
Are they used?
Diana, do you want to stay?
I don't know.
Okay, presentation from invited guest. Diane, you're one of our invited guests.
Wow, thank you.
And if you would come up.
Sit up here? Okay. Let me give you guys a couple of packets.
Thank you.
I've already seen this, you've already heard this, so.
Eclipse, what is this?
Yeah, August 21st, guess what? We've got a total eclipse happening.
I'm gonna go hunting that day or something.
Yes, I do.
They said all the animals will go to sleep because.
I don't know if there's any season open that day.
So, so August 21st, we have this eclipse event happening in our community. And it was probably back in January, February of 16, in my office, we started receiving these eclipse glasses. And at that time, we were trying to move our office and set up the museum, and we kind of put them in the desk and said, oh, we'll deal with that thing later. And then we started going to these conferences and was told that if you're in the path of the eclipse, people are coming. And you need to have your communities ready. And we're told we can have anywhere from 10 to 50,000 people come into our community. And then you're kind of like, okay. So in trying to pull people together, you know, you start thinking that this event is going to happen on Monday. And therefore, our hotel rooms are going to be full on a Sunday. And we all know what Jefferson City is like on a Sunday. It's kind of closed up. And if we have all these visitors in, we wanted Jefferson City to look as a very positive inviting community. So that's where we started thinking, okay, we need to step up and do something for this event and get prepared for it. Started pulling public safety together to advise them that we have these folks coming in. And we kind of looked at this as another July 4th event with the amount of people coming in. However, with it being on a Monday, the state workers were also going to be working. And for the July 4th, as you all know, we use all the parking lots around the Capitol and the Truman Building, but those were not going to be available. So that's when we were like, how are we going to control these people? Where are we going to send them? What are we going to do? And that's when we reached out to Parks and Rec, started talking to them about the North Jefferson City area. Wide open fills over there. Parks and Rec has stepped up and assisted us with some camping area. Right now, we probably have about 40 to 50 campers that have secured that area. They've also filled up the camping out at Bender, and that filled up immediately. So that's kind of where we're at. We've got a lot of activities happening. Eastside Business Association has also taken over Riverside Park. And on Sunday, they will have activity out there from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. With some food and art vendors and entertainment and sci-fi movies. And the cap, so then we transfer down to the Capitol area. We have also reached out and secured an astronaut, Mike Hopkins, that is from the Richland area. He is going to come into Jefferson City, and we're going to do a breakfast with an astronaut at Capitol Plaza on Sunday morning. And then we also have NASA that has chosen Jefferson City as one of the seven locations across the country to go live as eclipse is happening. And with that, us being selected as the NASA side, we also had the opportunity to bring in the Journey to Tomorrow traveling exhibit, which is a 53-foot trailer that will be parked in the press parking lot. They'll set up on Saturday and be open on Sunday and Monday to greet visitors. And with that, they will be bringing astronaut Janet, Dr. Janet Cavandi, who is currently the director of the Glenn Research Center out of Cleveland, Ohio. And she will be the spokesperson that will be live on NASA television. In addition to that, we reached out to Eric Aldrich, who is formerly with KOMU, that will assist her with that broadcast. And there is another person from NASA that will join them. They will be set up on the Supreme Court building steps. And they will do a dress rehearsal on Sunday at this time of the eclipse, and then again on Monday when the actual eclipse happens. So on Sunday, the Capitol lawn will have some educational series. The classic has come on as the sponsor of that series. And then the Traveling to Tomorrow trailer will be open. We'll have the astronauts there for autographs, photos, that type of thing. Sunday night, we are going to have a concert on the lawn. It will be a Pink Floyd tribute band with galactic lights happening. And I'll back up Saturday night, they're going to do like a Saturday Night Live in the downtown area also. Downtown Jefferson City will be sponsoring that event. So I gave you a schedule. Some of the events are happening, but we are constantly adding to these, so you can kind of look at that. We will also have a corn maze over at North Jefferson. Jay and Kim Fisher have stepped up and have created an eclipse corn maze for us. It will be open on Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. So then Monday after, so then Sunday after the concert, we roll into Monday, and Monday will be the focus of the eclipse. We will have activities happening on the Capitol lawn, but we will also have activities happening across North Jefferson City. And that is where we will have the eclipse village. We'll have food trucks, some vendors, some entertainment to keep people going until the actual eclipse happens. University of Missouri is going to bring over a weather balloon, and they want to launch it during that event over in North Jefferson also. So there's activity that's being added every day. It's pretty hard to keep up with all of it. It's a very consuming event. And the unknown of how many people are really going to show up. And what we're here today is just to present to you the, what's happening here in the city and the county, that the folks are coming, and we just want to be prepared for it. I would ask if there was any opportunity for you to help us out with some financial sponsorship for infrastructure. We are covering all the marketing expenses for the event and for the travel, Journey to Tomorrow traveling exhibit that's coming into the community and the astronauts' expenses of bringing them into our city. So the sponsorship is mainly for infrastructure. One of the first things we did when we knew this event was happening was reserve porta potties. So we have a huge expense on the porta potties. Shuttle service that we will be offering on Sunday and Monday, and also some parking and signage and that type of expenses. So I guess I'll just open it up and ask you guys if you have any questions or comments or thoughts. We have glasses also. I know Sam has glasses.
Is the shuttle service, service on just Monday?
It's on Sunday and Monday. You know, our concern with offering too much shuttle, on Sunday, we're going to offer it from the Capitol area over to Riverside, and then back down to the Capitol for the concert. Sunday, we're going to offer it from the Capitol area over to North Jefferson. Our concern on that is, you know, are our shuttles going to get caught up in traffic? And how do we keep them going? We are meeting with MoDOT and with the Highway Patrol. We do public safety transportation meetings about every two weeks. You know, there's gentlemen here in this room that have been involved in those discussions of just keeping what's going to happen and how do we handle it all. The airport has some folks flying in also for the viewing area. Expect more as we get a little bit closer. And a lot of it is weather related, you know, people are going to be watching the weather. It's going to look. And so in the packet I gave you, I did include a list of all the media outlets that have picked up on us. And we are still considered one of the top 10 spots in the country to come and watch the eclipse. And that's wonderful. It's wonderful publicity for our community. A little scary, on the other hand, too, what could possibly be happening.
So the carnival and the food trucks, I assume, and everything, that's going to be over in North Jefferson City?
It's going to be over in North Jefferson City. We will have some food trucks down here in the downtown area on Sunday. So we have visited with the state. The state is looking at the security side of what's going to have the impact on our community. There has been some discussion of canceling work for the state workers on Monday, but we have not heard a definite answer. So some of this work with working with the police department and deciding what roads need to be canceled kind of is, we're waiting to get final answer from the state because that will make a difference if those parking lots are open or not. So that, so depending on what we have available on food trucks, we will have some open, available on Sunday and Monday. We have been, I've been given the message that if you have any contacts with any of the restaurants, mainly in the downtown area, please ask them to be open on Sunday and Monday to accommodate the folks. I know a lot of them don't like having food trucks come into the downtown area for events, but we got a lot of people coming, and we've got to be able to provide food for them and water.
Are the streets going to be open Sunday and Monday?
Yeah. The streets may not be open from, I think it is for sure maybe Washington to Broadway on High Street, but the main downtown area streets will be open. And that's because of where NASA will be set up on.
Yeah. So the parking garage will be open?
Yes, yes. And I've heard the city is not planning to do any ticketing, but for that time period.
So the, the vending in the carnival area, I mean, are you guys using some of the generators that you've used from Bill Farr for some of that?
I'm assuming so, but I am not sure, Chris. Jill's been handling that side of it, so I can't answer that. I know Bill has been the organizer of our public safety transportation meetings that we have. We have another one scheduled for this Thursday. You're more than welcome to attend.
Okay.
Finalization.
So are you looking for a certain number?
Um, you know, I will take whatever you would like to offer. 2,500, if you could start with that, that would be wonderful, but I understand the budgets and, and so I won't be asking for a lot, just a little bit to kind of help us offset some of these expenses. And our mission is, is to give our visitors the best experience that they come into Jefferson City. And you never know, they may come in and decide, hey, this might be a great community to come and move to or open up a business. So you never know who's in that mix of visitors. Any other questions?
Did you contact Callaway County?
We did, and yeah, that's been, yeah, I haven't got much response there.
Will our ambulances be over, I mean, if we have the majority of the people north of the river Monday, will we be providing mutual aid over there?
Yeah, we service that area. It's adjacent city limits.
Okay.
That's our, that's our service area.
Okay.
We have already anticipated extra staff in those two days.
Okay.
Anything?
All right.
Thank you.
You got internet connection?
I pulled up the agenda, so.
I did, but I can't get.
Can't get anything else?
Yeah, I started.
I'll check for you. I don't think Sam knows how to get on the internet.
God, this is pick on Sam day. Come on, just kick me. Kick me. Come on.
Bend over.
Okay, let's keep going. Bids and contracts, approval and signing of public health emergency preparedness grant contract from DHSS.
This is our annual renewal of the, as we call it, the FEP contract. It pays for 65% of Chris's salary, 10% of Jamie's, and provides money for emergency response activities. We did not get any increase from last year. It's the same $48,479 that we have gotten the last few years.
Okay.
Jill has reviewed it.
Okay. I move that we sign the program services contract with DHSS for a public health emergency preparedness.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval and signing of Region F Healthcare Coalition MOU.
Have you had a chance to look at it yet by chance? I brought a copy if you need to, but what it is, it's just the establishing the formal roles and responsibilities from the healthcare coalition and outlines of each member of what's required. With the new CMS guidelines that the hospitals are dealing with, I needed a, a structure that could handle and hold everybody accountable for being a member.
Okay. Who's, who all is members of the Missouri Regional Healthcare Coalition?
It's hospitals, local public health, EMS, and then some outside agencies with EMDs, SEMA, DHSS. And we would be a primary agency.
Okay. This just outlines guidelines for everybody, how to act in a.
Yeah.
And how much we participate. You know, they value our opinion because we do a lot of the disease tracking. So if we see, you know, something happening, we can let them know. It, you know, it's just a memorandum of how we're going to work together.
And it's also a requirement through the FEP grant.
That we participate. And Chris just happens to be co-chair of the Region F Coalition.
Good. Guys, got any questions?
No.
I move that we sign the MOU with Missouri Regional Healthcare Coalition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval and signing of.
Thank you.
Agreement. Approval and sign of agreement with Cap Region Medical Center for clinical education or into.
This is the agreement with the county Cap Region. We signed one before. However, the wording, the Cap Region decided to use their own stock agreement that came back to us, and the wording was a little off, so it was corrected. Jill has approved this agreement. This is at no cost. This is allowing our paramedics to go to the hospital to perform clinical innovations to get their skills.
Okay.
They have not signed it, so we have to sign it and give it back to them.
Okay. Questions?
No.
So there's no cost to us?
Correct.
Just wait for my computer to get back to me if it's.
There's no money involved.
Right.
Just still.
Okay. I move that we sign the clinical education affiliation agreement between Cole County EMS and Capital Region Medical Center.
I'll second it. I'm on the board of governors, so maybe I should sit out too.
I'm on the executive board and. You were born there too. You left that out.
No, I was born in Still, hospital. Why do you think they closed it up? Jeff Memorial.
Did you second it?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not abstain.
Said we had a short agenda, so I was going to prolong some of this.
Okay. Bid renewal 2016 dash 27 R1 toner.
We bid the toner out last year, and we awarded to three local providers. Samco and Schrefer had no increases this year. Cartridge Solutions had some minor increases on their OEMs. This is just extending that agreement. Do you have any questions otherwise?
No, I'm good with it. I'm fine with it. If we can do it, what, three years in a row or something, whatever we do, so.
So this is bid renewal number one?
Yes.
I move that we approve bid renewal number one for toner.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Bid awards 2017 dash 27 Weapons Handgun Sheriff's Department.
I'll let Sheriff Wheeler talk about that, but basically, we got bids from three different companies, and the recommendation is for GT distributors.
They're the only ones that met the criteria of the RFP, so it's a good deal.
The primary offer for $16,702.50 for the new guns and the ammo trade-out.
I've already talked to you individually. My, I took 10,000 out for capital improvements to pay for this. I had no idea how much to put down. That's why I just put 10 grand. I've come to find out it's going to be closer to 17,000, but I still have that money in my capital improvements that I can move over to make it budget neutral, so we don't have to move around any funds.
I was just trying to get it pulled up here, John, so.
No problem.
Yeah, that was without the ammo trade.
So GT distributors bid two different things there then?
One was without the ammunition trade. The primary was with, the alternate was without.
I see.
I wouldn't want the ammunition traders. We're stuck with all that ammo, so.
Okay. You able to pull it up?
Yes.
Okay. We just awarding this? I move that we award the bid number 27 Weapons Handguns to GT distributors.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
2017 dash 29 Uniforms, Sheriff's Department.
We got five different bids on the uniforms, and they're kind of, you know, differing throughout. But the thing I want to point out is the lead time, they're all up to 30 days. With that in mind, I think the best idea would be to award it to the lowest and best bidder with available products, so they're never put in a spot where they can't get their hands on something that they need, and then they'll just go with the lowest and best.
Basically been using Bob Barker, right?
Do what?
Basically.
All of theirs are alternate, and you wanted the 511, so.
It's going to be the 511. We're not going to go with the LBECO or whatever the other one is. It's a different color, and it wears different.
I mean, you have been using Bob Barker in the past for a lot of your stuff, haven't you?
Mostly the jail.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm good with that.
Yep.
The only, the only stipulation I would make is the, is the bulletproof vests that's on there. We specifically requested for Gator Hawk, and nobody bid the Gator Hawk. So I'm not saying that we won't use the point blank, but it gives us an option if we need to. We may have to go out to bid again if we decide to increase the protection level. So if we go from a level two to a level three, then it gives us the ability to bid that out.
Don't you usually get a grant to?
We do have a grant to pay for half of that, half of what we bought.
Half, okay. All right, I move that we approve the lowest and best with available materials for uniforms, bid number 29.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Signing of a one-month extension of contract with Summit Foods.
Since we're doing our, we did a new RFP, we're going to be real close to the end of that with our current contract. So what we wanted to do is do a one-month extension to make sure that we can get past, to make sure we're not interrupting any kind of food to our, our facility. Unfortunately, the CEO to Summit doesn't work on Fridays or Mondays. So whenever I sent the email that it needs to be saying Bushman's name on this, it's Aaron Bolinger's name. So they're supposed to be sending that to me soon, hopefully today. And then I can bring this back up to you. If you want me to go back on the commission on Tuesday, I can, I can come back and do that also. Well, when I say me, I mean Bo.
I think we can go ahead and approve it as long as you.
Yeah, just look at it, prove it, and then whenever they get the new one.
So just going to change names?
Yes, sir.
And they can take it to Sam, just bring it to the store or whatever.
I mean, it's a three-line extension of the above contract. That's the end of it, so.
I move that we sign the extension with Summit Foods.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do we have any unfinished business? New business accounts payable review?
Whoa, 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 you got, you got banking services there?
No, we deleted that.
Okay.
It's going to be on there for next week.
Okay. What'd you say, Debbie?
The banking thing will be on there for next.
Okay. Unfinished business, nothing?
I'll have some stuff at the end.
Okay. Accounts payable review?
There isn't any accounts payable this week.
MFH, MFH grant discussion.
I don't have anything I need a decision on. I just wanted to talk about that grant that we did receive a little bit. MFH did send the $20,000, so we have it, and we have to spend it by May 31st of 2018. And it has to be spent on like a public health infrastructure type thing, like an EHR, which we need a new one, or like signage for the new building. We could use it on improvements for the building, anything that increases our ability to give services. So I just kind of wanted you to be aware, you know, we're kind of watching their timeline of when the community health center is going to be out of that building. But, you know, if we got to where we needed to spend it on like new signage or something, we could do that. MFH also has a competitive grant open right now. Donna and I are working on application for it for a new EHR. We got a quote from, it's called Patagonia, and it's a company that specifically designs their electronic health records for LPHAs, not for clinics. And it's about $30,000 versus some of the other ones that are $100,000. It has some really nice features, like when we get vaccine in, you scan the barcode, so there's no manual entry. And it actually interfaces with the state system. The ours does not right now, so you don't have to do double data entry on all the immunization records. So we're exploring that grant also, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that we're watching timelines pretty closely. Jim was just going to meet me at the building tomorrow morning, just to give us a rough estimate of how much it would be to fix the floors when they take the dental chairs out. And there's that training area. That's what we want to make where the dental areas is a training area. And they have an area where they have a bunch of autoclaves, where they clean all the dental equipment. And we'd like to put a three-vat sink in there, so we could do food safety training. And since it's already plumbed, and maybe put a stove there for cooking classes. So I was going to have him give a rough, a little estimate on how much that would be. So that's all I just, I give you.
Spending money for us already, huh?
I'm hoping to be able to give, give classes there. We've heard a lot of, of need of classes. And I'd like to spend the grant. They just need to break it out.
Yeah, yeah.
But if it's going to be some astronomical amount, of course, then we won't, but we do have the money sitting there. That's all.
I mean, if you put signage out over there, I mean, obviously, you probably looked at that building, but, I mean, hopefully, we're going to get it out closer to Truman Road. I mean.
And, well, and I don't know if we can use the big, I mean, they have like big concrete things now. If we can just put. If we can just put our signs over that, I have no idea, but it, it does seem like it is hard to see.
It's hidden.
I think Greg was talking about, Greg Camp was talking about maybe taking some of those trees down.
At least the underbrush, so we could see the building more. I agree, cause it's, a lot of people don't even know it's there.
Okay. Well, keep us informed. I mean, obviously if you get the EHR grant, then you have to spend it on something else, so.
Right, and the one that we're applying for is for three years, so we're gonna apply for the first year, buying the software in two years of the maintenance.
Okay.
That's our plan.
Alright, thank you.
Signing of surplus titles for nineteen sixty-nine Ford straight truck.
It was water pump truck. Those were sold on Purple Wave, right?
And our two thousand one International Dump Truck.
One was an old fire truck we wanted, or we bought for the stainless steel tank. We've since taken that off and made it a slide-in tank that'll fit in back one of our dump trucks for calcium chloride.
That's sixty-nine, that's a classic.
Probably had to tow him out of there, huh?
Well, he did wanna drive it, cause the brakes are bad.
Alright, I move we sign the surplus titles for the sixty-nine Ford straight truck and the two thousand one International Dump Truck.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Any other issues? Anything else come up?
Is there nothing else on the agenda?
No.
Did you do accounts payable?
Yeah.
There was none.
I do have a couple of questions. I was thinking this was on there, a copy machine for the juvenile center. Michael came up and was talking about leasing a different copier machine because his lease comes up in October. And Rico shot him, the current vendor is Rico, shot him a new lease for about a hundred dollars less a month. And so, and that was on a cooperative agreement. And so then Jennifer took it one more step and went out to see if there was any other agreements out there that we could maybe piggyback on that would be better. So she did find a better deal, not by much, but a little bit better. So I guess, I don't know if you want Michael to come up here. He wanted to actually just go ahead and switch leases and wanted to do a PO. Technically, I can't do a PO for a five-year lease without budget being approved for those five years. We'd have to encumber all the money now, which is not an option in his line item to do it now. So also while Jennifer was looking, she looked at buying the copier outright versus leasing it for another five years. So again, it's due up in October. If you want Michael to come in, I would wait till budget time for next year, but it, it's, it's now, you know, we have to do it this year in October if we're gonna do something with the lease. So.
Was it outright purchase option on that email?
Um.
Let me try and find it again.
Is that the one from yesterday, Debbie?
Yeah, this is a new one that. We didn't have an outright purchase.
Yeah, and at first they were doing the buy, there's no reason to buy that lease out because that machine, there's no reason to pay for essentially two leases at once. So that changed Rico's pricing a little bit towards a little less. But respectively Rico and Marco machine outright purchased seven thousand eight hundred ninety-three and eight thousand eighty-seven. So it's right around eight grand.
Do what now? Where are you getting eight grand?
Underneath.
Oh, the difference here?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you look at the very bottom numbers, that's the total cost for five years.
Okay.
The first number under the blue and the first number under the green represents the outright purchase and then the second two under each represent leasing it.
So obviously what is the? So if we purchase it, obviously it doesn't include anything. If we lease it, a lot of times they have.
The, whenever you, it's the same deal, it's the same coverage. It's just a matter of having the funds upfront. It's a little cheaper if you do that, but it's still gonna be the same cost per copy.
We'll get the maintenance for the whole five years.
Right, includes parts, labor, everything besides staples on Marco and then Rico includes staples, which that's not much, but it includes everything.
So it includes the toner?
Yes.
And the paper?
Not paper, not paper and not staples.
So many copies, right?
Yeah, and then.
Is there a certain number of copies that are included?
On Marco, it's eleven thousand and then the cost per copy over that is the point oh oh six three.
Okay.
So if you spend, if you guys had this in Excel, you can play with the numbers, but if you, if you spend under eleven thousand, Marco's is not going to be less because you have to do the eleven thousand. The Rico is just a cost per copy, so it's just however many copies you make times the point oh oh six eight. And in the case where it's eleven thousand, that's reflected at the top. That's gonna be, you know, the anticipated annual cost is on there. That's what you can see it's gonna cost you per year.
That's the cost of?
Everything. So when you, whenever you look at anticipated annual costs under the purchase option, it's just going to be the maintenance and parts coverage. And then if you look at it under the lease, that's gonna include the lease plus the maintenance and parts coverage.
I guess I'm confused, but which is a better deal?
At the end of the day, after five years, the Marco purchasing it outright is gonna be the cheapest at twelve thousand two hundred forty-five dollars.
Okay.
So on either, with either company, it's gonna be cheaper in the long run by a couple of grand to purchase it outright, but you have to pony up the eight grand or whatever, so.
And does that, so if we purchase it and you say in five years, maintenance, so does that include parts or not? So.
Parts, labor.
For five years, they're gonna maintain it free of charge? Buy any parts that's needed or whatever?
Yeah, that's included in that cost, that CPC over there, that cost per copy. All that stuff is included with that price.
So basically it's through, we're saving three thousand dollars that we purchase it. Everything else is the same.
Right.
Yeah.
If you go with Marco, you're only saving twenty-six hundred. But still.
Well, then maybe we oughta go with Rico, cause we could save three thousand. Yeah, it's a better deal!
Hey, when did you fight?
Do we have to do this right now? I mean, we're getting ready to start budget here in a month.
Their contract lease agreement is up in October.
October, yeah.
So we can wait a couple of weeks, we can have Michael come up here, we, you know, we can wait a little bit, but.
So when the lease expires, we can't go month by month after that?
I'm assuming we can, but the way I understand, there's been a lot of calls to them on this machine.
So everyone's given out?
Okay, so they have a five-year life of a machine, so what if it doesn't last five years?
It's on them, I guess.
Yeah, and they have to repair it.
Or replace it.
Or replace it, yeah.
Okay, so then after five years, if it's still running good, we can keep using it?
That's right.
And then if it just stops, then we have to decide what to do? Purchase another one or get another lease? I think we talked about this one time before, was any of these leases that are in the middle of the year, they're a pain? Be nice if they were off beginning of the year or to where our budget could handle them a little easier.
We got about a hundred different scenarios countywide. We got leases, we got costs per copy and, I mean, all of them are different.
Mm-hmm.
It all depends on if you do own it when it goes out.
I mean, I like the idea of purchasing it, we got the money in there to purchase it. I'm not a big lease person, but sometimes.
So how would that? Obviously, Michael wouldn't have that amount in his budget for two thousand and eighteen.
We could reduce his lease amount he has been paying out there going forward if you buy it outright, but other than that, it would have to come out of capital.
But I guess what I was getting at is if we bought it out of capital, could, could we reduce his lease for the next five years?
Yeah.
Yes.
Or we could own it and charge him a lease.
Yeah, I mean, either way. I mean, it's basically he's paying for it over five years, we're just fronting the money.
Yeah.
I currently, our copy machine out here, we've had for eight years. I don't have to say anything, but we had a five-year, we bought it outright. So this last three years, we've been just paying maintenance, which has really been small, you know?
Don't say that.
I know, I'm just gonna say.
She knocked on wood.
I do.
I know.
So.
Kick it around for a little while yet, or you wanna?
And I could have Michael come up and explain the problems they're having with their current one, if you want.
It's my turn, sorry.
Kinda, kinda confusing here, cause Rico bids a Conica Minolta and Marco bids a Rico. Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, you're right. It's no set.
I don't care, I mean, as long as, as we get our money recouped. I mean, I'd be okay with purchasing it later, whenever the other one goes out, I think we might as well use up the whole lease, cause we're gonna pay it, aren't we?
Right.
Yeah.
It's their responsibility to.
Yeah, I don't know why you would. Sharon said that it was, that it was fine. I don't think they realized that they were gonna be overlapping. I think that they thought when they were talking to the current vendor, that it would just be a matter of, okay, well, if you go to a new one with us, we'll kinda forget that, but they just took the rest and divided it out over the.
And I think when they saw lesser monthly lease amount, you know, they were willing to jump on that.
I'm about ready to start calling her number, just. So I'm not the only one that's childish up here.
I feel like it's a classroom now. If you don't behave, I'm gonna send you to the principal's office.
Well, Mike, that must really be important. I hope my kid didn't get hurt, I'm like, Devon, you were.
I mean, is this the one that Michael wanted, this Rico MP fifty fifty-five P or not?
The one they wanted was the Rico machine.
The Conica Minolta?
Yeah.
Okay.
The Rico vendor.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, when you say Rico machine, I was, which is Marco?
I mean, I'm okay with it. I mean, obviously, if Michael's got a problem with this other machine, I mean, I would assume that they're the same, but I have no idea. Are they the exactly same?
They're equivalent, yeah, they have the same features. I mean, Ford versus Chevy, I don't know.
Get a Dodge, take care of it all. What, do they need one that does eleven by seventeen? I mean, that's one question that came up.
Hmm?
Do they need a copier that copies eleven by seventeen?
They talked to the sales reps that would be addressing that and suggesting the appropriate machine. So whatever their answer was, should be reflected by the machine they selected to propose.
They do eleven thousand prints monthly?
Their old contract was for, I don't think they know exactly, their contract current was for twelve thousand monthly, so it has to be that size of machine.
It's their main one for the whole side over there. I don't know if they use it to print on too.
I'd like to just let Michael look at this and make sure that this is okay before we approve it. I mean, I mean, he's, he knows what he needs, I mean.
Yeah.
Obviously, they look identical, but, you know, if he sees something that's, he has to have, that one of them does or doesn't, it just, it could be best.
And I'd ask about the eleven by seventeen, I guess. What are they printing, he's going eleven by seventeen? Does anybody really print anything out?
Yeah, not to interrupt, but it's the probably legal documents that their accounts do.
These are legal documents?
Eleven by seventeen is very quick, yeah.
Legal documents are eight and a half by fourteen or something, aren't they?
Yeah, I was just trying to help him out, I don't know.
Well, I'm just making, I'm just making sure I'm taking the right thing. Somebody else actually brought it up and I didn't. I was thinking, well, that's just the big papers, it's legal documents, but no, it's eight and a half seventeen, it's like, if we're gonna be printing books or something. We don't even have that up here.
Well, I'll put it on, I'll put it on next week's agenda and have Michael appear. Because, I mean, the difference between them is a hundred and thirty-six dollars outright buying, so.
For what?
Rico vendor versus Marco.
Oh, you're just changing the subject now, trying to have Michael do, you and Johnny are cadets?
No, I'm just saying, I think Michael would probably want the one that's with Rico, but it's.
Ask him to come up and we'll just.
I think they just wanna stay with the vendor, they were talking about Oscar and that's their preference, I know that.
I think he needs to.
Well, I'll have Michael come up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that'd be good.
Alright.
We'll just do that. At least we don't have any closed session today.
There, there is a, sorry. A lot going back and forth about the NID and the conference call this Friday on the ratings. I'd like to join these to know by today, you know, what we're gonna do as far as waiting and combining both Randall Drive and Park View Meadows together as one bond issue and if that's even possible with Eric and Public Works and the timing of everything versus the landowners on Randall Drive, I understand would like to wait and have it on the next year's. So. So if you guys could stick around, we need to at least conference call Joy and get all the facts and figure out what we're gonna do.
Mary, what do you think?
Well, we're gonna talk about this afterwards then and get her on the phone, so we can figure out the.
Yep.
Okay, we'll just talk about that, if that's alright.
And one other thing is the map that we'd like to put on the wall here. I asked Melissa to come. Maybe you guys could talk about which design you like and what you wanna see on it, so we can do that afterwards too.
And I have, and I could do something custom about the few templates that I'm gonna come up with, but one of the things I did, I asked some other people that I work with through the GIS organizations and one of the suggestions was a company called Fathead.com that does these adhesive, kinda like your seal that you have.
I love how he's calling me Fathead.
Not yet. But they could basically do pretty much any size you want. They could wrap an whole room in a map if you wanted to. But I kind of just, in a query, asked them kind of for a couple. But, um, I kind of just, in a query, asked them kind of for a couple of different sizes. And they can do like a three by three adhesive back map for seventy-one ninety-nine. Or four by six size, for example, would be one twenty-five ninety-nine. Um, you can also get it in a dry erase.
A little taller than six foot for you, though. Oh, we're still talking about maps? I thought you were gonna get fat heads of us.
They also can do a dry erase version. So if, say, for an office wanted a dry erase one for their wall that they could write on or whatever, you can get that. It's a little bit more expensive, a hundred and seven ninety-nine for a three by three or one sixty-seven ninety-nine.
What's it cost to just print one out?
Yeah, I could, like, I could print out a paper map, um.
Man, that's all I think we needed, isn't it?
Map it or mount it to where it looks nice. Um, you know, there are also some, uh, a company that another friend of mine told me about that's called Snap Frames that has these frames that you can kind of just open the frame up, mount the frame, open it up and then stick the map in there and close it up. Or, you know, we could, you know, just mount it to a piece of, or a bunch of pieces of foam board or some kind of, something like that. Just different options that I was kind of looking at after you guys, you know, had this commission chamber all read down. I thought it'd probably be best to make it look as nice as possible.
I mean, obviously, we can do a paper one, but then we're gonna have to frame it and mat it and everything else. And that's probably gonna be three hundred dollars or something to frame it and mat it.
Yeah. It's just depending on how big you want it, you know? If you get something big, it's hard to find, I mean, plexiglass is not cheap either. Glass is heavy, you know? So just different options. I just wanted to throw at you. Just that we would sit there and have a lot of better room to work with. My standard three by three, um, doesn't include Jefferson City map because it won't fit to where you can really see it. We could do a separate one, but I could also make a really wide one and add that on the same map.
And those pictures that you're seeing is three different styles of maps that the sheriff, uh, sheriff's department actually has in their building over there.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can do pretty much whatever. Those are just some that I've already done for the sheriff's office. So.
And I'm sure once we put it on, it'll probably be there for three to five years. So.
Longer.
Sixteen years. How long's the clock been here?
Longer than me? I don't know.
Which one?
One that doesn't work.
So you guys can think about it, but just whenever you're ready, give us some direction, especially what you wanna see on it. If you wanna see the incorporated cities separate like that one, and if you wanna see maybe, um, voting areas or whatever you guys wanna see. Obviously, road names would help. I, I mean, maybe you guys know where all the roads are in the county.
And we could do more than one if we wanna do smaller ones and just the different themes. We could do that, too, so.
So are we talking about putting it back here on the back wall or the side?
I was going in between those two lights.
I don't think we can put them over there, 'cause that's gonna be our projector wall.
No, but I was just saying, if you did like a Fathead type thing where you could take off, I mean, we don't use the projector all that often, but you could put it back up.
Another screen to go down, but, but either one of those walls actually you'd like.
Yeah, if you did the adhesive, you definitely want it in a place that you're gonna keep it until you get tired of it and wanna replace it.
Let's borrow John's and put them over here and see how we like it, and then we'll just keep them.
The Fathead works good. If you put it up one time, if you take it down and put it back up several times, then the adhesiveness will wear out. So you don't wanna do that. Not that I'm gonna help anybody, 'cause I got a sling.
The ones they have, some of theirs that are in, I think it's in the detective area, are just the paper maps that are just taped to the wall.
You're sensitive today. Need some idol?
You have the bigger one that you have. I'm trying to remember how we had it mounted.
Corn dog.
And the other thing that I've seen is like the big, taking the big, um, taking like.
Okay, children.
Foam insulation, sheeting and putting it on, attaching it to that and just kinda making the edging look nice. I don't know how all that would work, but.
As far as what it has, I, I think if it's got the roads and the different incorporated areas and stuff in there, just so we have something to reference to when we're working on certain things, yeah, or the, I mean, even the colored one has a township. I don't know how much we actually use the townships. It just, I don't know. It looks kinda nice.
It's prettier 'cause it's got more color.
So.
Well, I could make the other one with more color.
We can, you know, we can put a couple of different maps up there. It has different purposes on them. They can be for decoration as much as for the usefulness. As far as whether we do the Fathead, I mean, those are reasonable prices. And I don't know.
Really, some of having the townships might not be bad.
I wasn't sure if that company that did your seals did those big, they were local and they did the big.
Yeah, they're gonna have a lot more setup fees and stuff like that. So, yeah, that was just for that. It was around two hundred bucks to do a GIF or to get it formatted, 'cause we didn't have it in a format, but we've got that now. So, yeah, I don't think it'd cost that much.
Okay. It might be better just to do the city of Jefferson in a separate, if you wanted the city's map, have it in a separate, too.
Oh, it might be pretty cool to, you know, do some other county map and put whatever one on there and then do the other incorporated areas, you know, around it, kinda like it's drawn on that one. But they'll be separate ones, but.
Well, I could do some templates and kind of, or drafts and send you guys, um, email with the draft on it. You can kinda look and see if, you know, if that's what you wanna see. So.
So we'll get that.
You'll probably get three different answers if you ask that.
Well, that's why I brought it here.
Maybe I should just add some gloss.
No. Then I get in trouble. Who did that?
Oh, my goodness. Poor thing.
I know.
You're so beast.
That's all I have.
People are getting up and walking out. Do we have anything else?
There is, it's transfers. I don't know if you guys have talked about it yesterday.
You're supposed to raise your hand and ask to be excused.
No, I'm just gonna, I gotta leave out another meeting. But we had an accident last night. One of our guys did. He's fine. Single car accident. He was responding to disturbance. I don't know anything else about it. We haven't repeated dash cam investigation, but we have a completed investigation. But everybody's fine except for the car. So it's sitting out front. We've already contacted Jennifer to get the, um, people over there to start looking at it and show them the workers' comp.
Was it about the second one this year?
Yes.
Second or third?
Second.
I mean, that's, yeah, that's not bad considering how many calls y'all respond to. So that's good. Glad he's okay.
Yeah.
Wasn't our Wardsville complex.
He's got pride, 'cause now he's gotta put the steering wheel on his car. We have a golden steering wheel. All right, thank you.
All righty.
Thanks, Sean.
I was just looking at some emails, seeing if there's anything else that we hadn't, um.
Yeah, so why are we, um, why are we transferring out of contingency for parks for AMS?
Good job, Mr. Buck, Kevin. Um, your department sent up some transfers, again, from out of contingencies into parts and into, um, uniforms. Do you know anything about those? So maybe we'll just have to wait and.
I would assume the uniforms probably 'cause the purchase of these and the brass and the badges have to do with it.
Okay. Let me just wait till next week, then.
Okay. I'll put it on the agenda and invite Jerry up.
I, I would've thought, just, just for discussion here, um, I would've thought that, I thought that they'd transfer once for parts or something, but it was coming out of another maintenance item and it was just kind of a wash, you know? Obviously, you guys are separating parts, parts and your repair items. So you had a lot of money in repairs or something, and you were just switching it over to parts. But now that we're taking money out of contingency for parts, I'd rather see you wipe out your repairs and parts, you know, swap those first, but before we dip into contingency. But just food for thought.
We can definitely get Jerry up here next week and look at maybe some of the other line items in his budget as well. But, um, I think maybe.
Where's all, where's all the cost on the parts coming from, I guess, is what we need to look at if there's something that we're not budgeting appropriately, then when you look at that, are we using more certain parts or fixes now than we did before, or what?
Well, it, it had looked like there was a sizable amount. I can't get to it, but there's a sizable amount in repairs left. And so I don't know if they're just, if you're just separating it out to get a better idea of what you're paying in parts versus, versus labors.
So some of the parts you're saying could have been actual repairs and.
Well, they are repairs. I mean, they're just.
We did kinda change the process at the beginning of the year with how they paid invoices. We tailored it kind of like the sheriff's department, you know? If you go in and you're getting an oil change, they break down the invoice into the individual items. They weren't doing that prior to. They were taking the whole invoice and paying it out of certain line items.
Labor going to repair parts.
Right, right. So we expected quite a bit of movement between lines this year just to get that process down to where they were doing it consistently, the same way all the time.
Well, I think the one before was when we were doing the Ford Explorer, 'cause it didn't have the police package, so we had to.
The, the new one?
Yeah.
There were, there were some associated with that, but I don't.
Yeah, but I think that was the last one.
I mean, and I think there's been a few purchases that were bought out of there that were probably, lights for the ambulance, seven hundred dollars that were probably.
Some of those lights we found, uh, cheaper than other places that were starting to venture off. There's, a lot of those lights started to go out on those trucks. We had an in-house guy who was actually able to find them at a lower cost. So I think we bought a couple and then we said, no, no, that's way too expensive.
Okay.
So I'll just have, I can give you the breakdown of what we've spent so far.
Okay. That's it. Thank you, sir. You're not much help.
I didn't want John to be the one getting.
Yeah, so, um, we can keep this in session. I think Eric just left. I just kinda wanted to get a rundown of the project with him first, and then we can call Joy if you want. There we are with finishing these out.
Okay. I'm gonna go over and refresh coffee and then we can call Joy.
Okay.
Cap.
Or talk about it and then call her. 'Cause I really don't know what the benefits of doing it either way are gonna be. So I guess that's what we need to look at, or if there's even, if this is just a matter of when we call them.
There's about a ten thousand dollar savings in the financing if we throw them together and finance it at the same time and issue the bargain.
Not a savings for us. So it's up to them. If Randall Drive's saying they don't want theirs on the books for next year, though, then really it's a moot point. 'Cause they're saying we don't wanna join them together, whether it's savings or not, correct?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, and politically, it's up to you guys.
It's safe for property owners.
Yeah. Whether you say, well, we're done, so it's gotta be.
But if Randall Drive says we don't want it on next years, then we don't have really a saving.
Well, now you can say.
If the project's completed, they can start paying for it.
They can, but whenever they made the agreement to do it all, what was the agreement to do it for twenty eighteen's?
I think the last email, he said he understood it was probably going to happen this year, but he was rather not, so.
Who said that?
Just one person?
Yes. The majority person. I don't want that guy's name on it.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Gotcha.
But I think maybe Eric can answer. That came from Eric.
Well, I'm, I'm here to talk.
So.
I'm fine. I'm gonna get some coffee.
So the Randall Drive people don't want it on this year's, or?
Um, I talked to Gary and his comment was initially they were planning on it being on this year's. Okay, that was all good. The school bomb is fast. And therefore now their property taxes are gonna be, it's quite a bit. And so he didn't know if they were gonna be prepared enough to deal with it this year. And so his comment was, yes, he was planning on it being this year, but if it didn't have to be, that'd actually be better for him if it went on to next year.
Did he realize that it maybe cost him more if we didn't, um, do it this year?
Is it a nineteen-year payback to seven twenty, then? Is that what it is?
Um, I don't know what it would equate to.
I think it's still twenty. It's just the financing company rolled into it.
Might be less per year, but still the same amount years, yeah. Not only save him, but save maybe the other company.
My conversation for Eric is, is can we get Randall Drive done and get these both closed out this year? And he, and he talked to Stockman and they thought, yeah, they, they'd probably be done with Randall about mid-August.
I actually stopped by on the way here. I was out, uh, stopped by Stockman on the way here, talked with their other manager. It's, there, there's a bunch of, some things have to fall together just right, okay? Asphalt, there, they have to work with us to get there when we need it. Um, it might be, you know, just getting backfilling done, seating and all that kinda stuff. We don't wanna do that. We don't have to middle of August. We'd like to wait a little bit. We can call the projects substantially complete. Still have some savings to do that for normal. Um, we'd like to not be backfilling and scratching on brand-new asphalt. So we'd hold off on the top lift of asphalt till they're done with that. So, you know, we can be waiting on that. And that might not be done by the middle of August. A lot of it depends on, a little bit on the weather, uh, a lot on scheduling of the asphalt, definitely just the asphalt. And then if we could tie all, get all the quantities, all that worked out, which we can, we're just gonna work hard to get it done. Randall's probably the bigger question. Parkview, though, get down. Shouldn't be a problem there. Uh, Randall getting everything buttoned up, I believe it's gonna be a big issue. And what was the, the drop dead date?
Next week.
Next week before?
Um, to be able to combine the two. Today is the drop-down dead, if we're going to combine the two.
Okay. Well, I was reading some emails yesterday and, uh.
Okay.
There was an extension of what the collector needed, right? What's the date on that?
So he said hard deadline for him would be the tenth of October. It was the first. He gave us a little bit of leeway till the tenth. The tenth's gonna be pushing it, so we're.
Where do we back to, or back off from the tenth? Where do we end up?
I think you're still the eleventh. It has to be completed by the eleventh of August.
I thought, I thought the eleventh was the October first, right?
I don't think you still have a lot of leeway there. I think that gives time on other items that have to be completed after your construction's completed.
I think we better just call Joy and, or do you, or you want Tony to talk to Tony?
Tony, it seemed like she's more on the scheduling side of it than Joy. They totally wanna send that, they have the scheduled dates on it.
Oh, no, that's, that's Joy who does that.
Mm-hmm.
Let's just call Joy right now.
Well, let's just get a call.
All right, you can go get.
Realistically, if I'm gonna tell you, yes, we can get done, I can't do that. There's too many unknowns. You just don't know. And so.
And I, I would be, I'm kinda nervous about saying we're done, and then we have runovers. So we have something unexpected happen.
I told Luke, I told him, I said, if we're saying we're done, that's it, period.
That's my theory, is that we're not gonna be done.
Right.
Well, we're gonna agree to, if this is what the final price gonna be, period, we're not changing it. And if they agree to that, you know, that's the thing. But we're not gonna know that until.
Right. Well, so I asked Joy, I posed the question yesterday, and I said, what if we don't get done by the eleventh? Do we just move forward with Parkview like we were before? And she said, yes. So we could delay what we're doing now with the hope of adding Randall, but ending up that we're not done by the eleventh and we just move forward with Parkview by itself. So, so we still have that option if we, if it's not done, to, to continue on and just do Parkview by itself this year. It's just we're pushing Parkview off to, to being, uh, everything's got to fall in place in line to get it done.
And you think Parkview, no problem with it being done and ready to go? I mean, the way I talked to Joy, we're doing Parkview one way or another.
Right, right. That one's going no matter what. But my question was if we make the decision today to delay it, does that create any issues for going forward with just Parkview if we would?
Do Parkview today and leave the other one till we're done.
And that, that's definitely your own decision.
That's the safer option.
Yeah.
I, I almost think I would err, just because of the issues we've had with timing and things getting done with these.
Yes.
I think err on the side of. I, I think err on the side of doing them separate.
The question, Randall, there's a realistic chance that one could be contested, because we had the people come and, remember that?
Mm-hmm. Protested with the tax roll.
I don't know what, they, I guess, have so many days to file those issues or something. Is that right?
Well, they do.
Yeah.
Now, what's the...
So, I, I think err on the side of just doing Parkview moving forward and doing Randall when it's done and completed and...
And that's all the decision these ladies need.
Okay. Are we still up?
No, I didn't, I can get her up if you want.
No.
Oh, that?
I mean, we still have issues with Parkview, though, and the contractor there and getting bills paid and everything else, too, so...
We do.
I mean, you know, so you're going to close it out, and you really don't know what your costs are going to be on that, because, because there could be additional costs in getting all that done.
As far as what?
I mean, if Kaufman sues us, if, I mean, I mean, there's, there's a lot of variables there. I mean, with Randall, yeah, you may not be totally complete, but you got a pretty good idea what seeding and backfilling and strawing and all that, and even asphalt it's going to cost. I mean, it ain't going to vary that much.
On, on August 11th, on Randall, we'll know what our final cost is going to be. We just might not be done with every little item. But it was bid square yard on pavement, so we're not going to go there. I mean, it's confined. It's not going to change.
I mean, the changes are going to happen with curb, with approaches, with everything else. I mean, you've got all the stormwater in. I mean, once that, once the base is ready and the asphalt's going down, there's no, there's no changing really going on.
They should finish this more this week ahead of, about here, about two. So, we'll have a good firm number on that.
I mean, the only reason I'm kind of pushing, and, you know, I get what you're saying. The safe way is to just put it off. But let's get these things done and get them out of our hair.
Well, I guess I have some concern on co-mingling them, too, because you cannot use any of the payments made by this group of people to pay bonds for this group of people.
Yeah.
So, throwing it all together into one bond issue is going to messy the, the waters on the back end of those payments getting applied to me. But, I mean, we can sit down and work our way through it.
Well, now, I didn't understand it that way. I thought it was one sale, but it was going to be two separate bonds.
I don't know about, well, we called Joy on that, but the, the bookkeeping of it will be separate.
Right.
So, we'll know that, because they're going to get a different price per lot than metals, um, Parkview Metals is. So, it's going to be separate, but it is going to be on one issue here.
Right. So, when we're making that payment, we're making one...
To that category of bonds.
Even though their amounts coming in are separate, it's going into one, one issue when it's done.
Yes.
One thing that, and talking with Tony on the phone here a few weeks back, and we were talking about finishing and all these dates and everything, and she made the comment that there couldn't be any work still taking place on something.
That's the way I understood it.
Except for like seeding or little cleanup thing like that. She said that was okay, but if it was like substantial items, then that couldn't be still. We couldn't just go and say, okay, well, this is what it's going to be. We'll pay you, and then you can finish it in two weeks, not tonight.
To the last layer of asphalt, would that be, would that be substantial?
In my book, it is.
I mean...
It, it, yeah. I mean, there's a reason why we're holding off on it, you know, it's so we don't damage it when we're doing the cleanup things.
Technically, I haven't drawn down all of the money off of either one of them yet, as far as the short-term note goes. I can today. I can get it done today.
I thought you could only do a drawdown every 30 days. Did you just do one?
Yeah, I did one for about, yeah, a week. Is there a 30-day?
I thought it was almost every...
I didn't know there was any kind of stipulation on it. I wouldn't know why there would be.
I thought originally you could only draw down every 30.
Well, then, that was one of the questions they asked, if, if we hadn't even drawn down everything.
So, if we wait on Randall, I mean, do we just hold on to all that money for a year?
I'd say we finish the project, it's done, but...
And we'll go on the tax rolls until next year.
Yeah.
So, what is it? They just pay an extra year of interest then, or...
It'd be figured in there.
It's still a 20-year...
And the payback wouldn't start till next year.
Like 18 would be the first year.
They just have to pay the temporary interest from now until...
Till...
I mean, the, the extra time just figures into the total bond.
I mean, I don't know. How does that, how does that work, either?
Because, I mean, you're still going to have to have a date when you're going to sell the bonds and give them 30 days prior to pay it in full. So, I mean, now you've given them almost a whole year to pay it in full if they want.
You do give them a whole year?
Well, you are.
Yes.
I don't think they know what the number is, though, until we get our rating and all of that.
Right.
They got, they got a pretty good idea what the number's going to be.
Hey, Joy, this is Debbie in the County Commission, and we've got a room full of people here discussing, discussing the two NIDs, so...
Understood.
Okay, we got a few questions for you.
Okay.
Um, one being if we did put off Randall Drive for another year, as far as getting it on the tax rolls, the time period in between the interest that's accumulating on that short-term note, how does that all play into anything?
Well, it wouldn't be a year. Basically, it's a note, the interim financing note matures in March. So, next calendar year, yes, but not a year from now. You would probably issue the, um, bonds like in February or March, one or the other.
I see.
Um, and then the size of the financing would retire the principal amount of the note plus the interest that has accrued on the note. But that's very small, because the interest rate is extremely low on that note. We're talking maybe $1,000.
And that's right. That short-term loan went to March of 18, okay?
Correct.
So, March of 18 until we can get it on the tax rolls.
Correct.
Will be small.
Correct.
When does the 30 days start, once you retire that? I mean, when do they, that 30-day time period that they have to pay it off, when does that start?
Uh, that's a good, that's a good question, because normally, if that's the completion of construction. So, most likely, you would go ahead and proceed with that this year. The ability to prepay, you just, it wouldn't do the actual bond financing until next year. It, so I hope I answered that clearly. I think regardless of when you would do the bonds, the notice for prepayments is generally sent out once construction is completed.
So, they'd almost have, so their liability wouldn't start till 2018, but they'd almost have 21 years of delayed time before they would pay it off. Is that right? Because, I mean, you're almost a year out before they hit, get hit with it.
That, that 30-day period is with respect to prepayments.
Right.
Um, but the bond financing is capped at 20 years. So, it's either going to be, um...
But they're not going to make their first payment for a year, is what I'm getting at, before the, the first 20 payments start.
Right. Let me give you the two alternatives. If we do the financing now, the first payment's going to be due in March of 2018. And if we do the bond issue next year, the first payment would be due March of 2019.
Okay, because they would go on the tax rolls in October, November, but we hold them on...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Debbie, but the, the payments are basically are to match both a 20-year time constraint and they also match the, um, tax levy cycle.
So, we'd be setting on the money for about three months, assuming everybody paid by the end of the year for their taxes. And then, our payment to the bonding would be due in March of that 19.
Well, if, okay, again, I'm a little confused. I didn't quite hear what you said. But do you want me to explain that both ways?
No, I don't think. I was just clarifying that if we don't, even if we finish this year, as far as...
If you wouldn't impose, if you, if you finish this year and we don't do the bonds until next year?
Yes.
You are not going to impose an assessment this year, period.
Period.
Yeah.
And that's what our problem was, doing it, part of what our problem is doing it this year, is that the tax bills go out in October.
Right.
And to try and get everything put together, get a rating, get everything done, it's really a push to do it this year. This, this levy cycle. So, if we go into next year, you would issue the bond in March, we'll say March, 2018. The levy would be extended in October of 2018. The, those assessments would be due in December, and you would make your first payment on March. Technically, you could have your first payment on February, but typically, um, bond payments are due in March to allow some time for late payments.
Sure.
That's, and I think I said that early on, which is, when we're talking about an issuance next calendar year, technically, it could be as early as, as February.
But Parkview, we're moving forward no matter what.
Pardon?
Parkview, we're moving forward no matter what this year, right?
Yes. That would be the plan unless construction doesn't get done timely and we miss that October date.
Yeah, we're still on schedule for it.
We're still on schedule. Um, we were hoping construction would be done on the 28th. Uh, Eric updated us yesterday, and he was saying it would be the week of the 31st. And as long as it's any time that week, we're still good to go. Now, I think if we went into the following week, I think we still are okay. But after that, we're going to miss, we would miss our deadline.
We'll be all right.
Hey, Joy, this is Kristen. Um, if we go together with both of them, how does that work as far as the payments made on the bond issue? Is it one payment, or is it two separate?
Oh, for each of them?
Right.
According to Bond Council, we could market the issue at, as both of the nets as a single issuance. But from a accounting perspective?
Right.
We would treat them as two separate issues.
Okay.
I, and the bond documents, the bond documents as well as the numbers I would provide you. So, just an example, we'll say that for the first year, the principal amount is, um, $30,000 for each ned. Then, from a marketing perspective, America, who's your underwriter, they would go out and sell that as $60,000 principal amount. But from our perspective, it would be two, two separate $30,000 series.
Okay, okay.
Is that kind of what you understood I was saying?
Right, because I know that there's, there's some things where you can't use one property owner's payment to pay for a different one. So, we would still need it all to be separated.
Exactly.
Okay.
And that's part of what creates, you know, this complication and structure, is that effectively, even if we're offering them at the same time and as one document, we still have to go through all of the work of two separate issues essentially.
Okay.
And I, um, do you have any other questions of Joy on the Randall Drive, for a second? Okay, Joy, I will give you a call back here shortly when they make a decision.
And I'm still here, so if you think of something you didn't ask, you didn't ask me, I'm available.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Joey.
Bye.
I mean, to me, the big savings to us is only going to be once, then twice.
And that is, because they have to redo all the documents. So, the legal counsel and Joy, their price is going to be if we did them separate anyway, because they're redoing everything.
Is it our expense, or is it the NIDs' expense?
It's the NIDs. Every bit of this is the NID. So, if you want a recommendation, I'd say let's just move forward with Parkview Meadows and let Randolph go until next year. If you guys, that's mine. I don't know. You guys say what you want to do.
I'm a little, the whole Parkview thing, we're a year late on that with everything that's happened on it. We still have some potential issues with that. We're taking a little bit of a gamble that we'll be fine. I'd hate to dump Randall in and really risk it. I'm really concerned that Randall, we're not going to be done like we need to be.
That's my biggest concern, is that it's not going to be done where it needs to be by the 11th. And all we've done is pushed back the work that we've already done on Parkview.
Yeah, it took us forever to get to this point.
Right.
And the two, the two, the same contractors doing both, I mean, I could tell them we're not going to push on Randall. We got until the end of the month contractually-wise, and really, we got as much time as we need. Can you give me a few more guys, make sure Parkview's done, get it over with, and move on? I think that'd be the safer way to do it.
I agree with Jeff. Let's just do Parkview Meadow.
Whoa!
Twice, what, twice?
You all right? Want to smurf?
That's good. No, I mean, I just like to get them both done, but anyway, it ain't going to happen. It ain't going to happen, so...
Okay, well, I'll give the direction to Joy and Tony that we're moving forward on Parkview Meadows only at this point.
So, we still have a rating call from May?
Yes.
Friday.
Friday. We still have a rating call.
Provide matters.
Um, you sent that email, forwarded that email from that Steve Aaron's out there, Catalina. I've talked to him before, and there's a detention basin behind some of those houses there, and I think it was built as part of another part of that subdivision that's actually in the city.
Oh.
And it was a requirement or something done when they did it in the city, and they built this area behind there, but that part actually fall, fell in the county where this, the basin is. It hasn't been taken care of. I didn't know it was even there. You didn't know it was there. It just got built with it, and none of us knowing. Okay, so it's a, basically, it's a private detention basin, and he's kind of wanting us to look at it and see what their options are. And I told him back, we did, I did do that, uh, reached out to the city, and they provided the information on how it was done and why, and I told them it's really not a county maintenance issue. It's really up to you all to take care of it. So, I mean, do we need to just do the same thing again, or? I don't, you, you guys, at this point, don't want to get into maintaining basins, do you?
Hmm. Who cleans out pipes? Sean York.
Yeah.
Tell him to call Sean York. Get his pipe cleaned out. Hire somebody to dig it out and sort it in around his pipe.
At some point, we're looking at doing some stormwater detention basins. We would do them, and if we did them, we would take care of them long-term, but not these private ones, though.
Yeah. As far as I know, I'm not even sure there is any, but ease them forward.
I'll have to check. I'll, I got it. I'll, uh, what I'll do is I'll get back to him and set up a time to go visit with him.
Yeah.
It's similar to like the one we've got out there in Pioneer Trail that, that the bank now owns, uh, you know, so...
I don't know. I see those being a nightmare.
Yeah.
Because nobody's going to maintain them. It's going to be kind of like a cemetery. Somebody's going to be the executor of the cemetery forever.
Yeah.
And somebody's got to mow it, clean it out, maintain it once in a while.
Now, if they've got a homeowner's association, then they need to...
Yeah, but they got to do it.
Yeah, they got to, I mean, but it needs...
But therein lies the problem, okay? So, HOA doesn't do it, so it fills up, clogs, it floods somebody, okay? Now, the HOA owns it. You just got flooded and you got $30,000 worth of damage in your basement because they didn't maintain it. So, you're going to sue an HOA that don't have any money? I mean, it's, it, yeah. It's just a bad deal. I mean, you're just, don't be below the detention pond.
That's the bad thing about those. There's not a long-term maintenance deal set up, and, I mean, now, if we did them today, yeah, you could set that up and be part of something that could be taken care of long-term, but the way that they work in the past, they're just, they were done and they were forgotten about.
Yeah, but the problem with those HOAs is that people come in and out and, you know, oh, we don't need to do that. So, then they forget about it for 10 years, and, and all of a sudden, it's a huge problem and a big expense.
Yeah.
So...
Okay. I'll copy you back on.
Okay.
I'll respond and we'll set it up and...
Tell him to meet out there in the president of HOA.
I'll just tell him, Chris, that we'll take care of it now.
Well, I know Steve, too, so... Just tell him to stick a propane tank down in there and blow it up. It'll shoot everything out both ends.
I got, I got an note here that I was going to ask Jeff. Tom Sheppers would like to know if you know where he could get a half a dozen peacocks for his grandson.
Somebody, somebody down in Loose Creek or...
I mean, shotgun to take care of them. That's the good thing about being out in the country and the bad thing.
Seriously?
Have your roosters, yes.
There's somebody-
Somebody across the-
We're still recording, by the way.
I know you are.
Somebody, somebody across the hall here is gonna be my new neighbor and I've got a rooster over there, I don't really care for a whole lot. Don't mind them, but sometimes at five-thirty, you just wanna go back to sleep, you don't wanna hear that.
Yeah, that was a note I got. I got one other thing. Jamestown C-1 School sent me, "Our auditors, Gerting, Corte, and Chip Wood, CPAs, conducting an audit of our financial statement. Please indicate in the space below information regarding tax abatements as it relates to us." Isn't Jamestown in Montauk County?
Yeah, but some of their kids that go to school there live in Coal County, so-
We got one, was that the same comp, same company that did?
Russellville.
Yeah, Russellville, R-1.
I don't know why they put the commissioners' names on this.
We, we have a spreadsheet set up that we've been sending out to everybody.
I'll give you, I'll give you that then.
Normally, it's been going to the collector.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It just depends on who the auditor is.
Well, that's like the Freemans now are sending me the, the notices on our Paulper's funerals, and that was going to the public administrator.
Anything else?
Just an FYI, I'm out of, out of town next week on vacation, so.
What? Did you all vote on that?
We did.
Where are you going?
Florida.
Good.
So, um, I'll try to have everything nailed down on wherever we're at on Parkview and all that, if anything comes up.
He needs spray.
Way.
You heard any more out of Kaufman?
I would suspect that he won't sign anything. I would, uh, probably it's gonna linger on for a while. And the problem becomes, we can just close it out and everything. I'm like, yeah, we can close it out and just cut him off, or cut it off, and we're just, we're making more payments out of it, but getting lien waivers and all that turned in to make the actual final payment, I don't know how we do that. Do we just hold on to that money?
No.
Yeah, we don't-
Because there'll be a dollar amount that'll be the final payment, which will be the five percent retained.
Well, if we've got bills that he hasn't paid, then we're not gonna release any money.
I'd contact the suppliers and pay them directly.
I'd put, I do like insurance companies, you put both their name on it. He signs it, they sign it, and that way you know.
I know the cities had issues before like this, and they basically got everybody and traded checks type of thing. Um, we ran into this a little bit on McCarty Street when we were doing that cooperative project. We actually held a contractor, this team of those kids, and I think it came down to, you know, he had to come in and verify that he had everything paid out before we did issue that final payment or something, or it was kind of a, you know, a distinct-
Do we know all the contractors they currently own money to?
I know Sean York's one for sure, and there's gonna be, really, that's it as far as contractors, there's gonna be some suppliers, material suppliers, and vendors, New Way, Coal County Industries, ADS Pipe, or HD Supply, or one of the five companies. There might be others, you know. Others, others are the one he voluntarily told me. I, that's all I know, is Sean York's the only one that's called, been asked. So. Really, we don't get into too much of, into more. You know, we just kinda wait, if he wants to get his final payment and release the bond, then the one-year warranty period starts. You know, usually, that's the thing that prompts him to get things moving, but if he's having his issues, he may not be in any big hurry, he's having trouble already. So, then Larry suggested, you know, send him a letter saying, "This is your deadline on getting things completed. Copy the bonding company." Or somebody said, "Did you come in?" Yeah.
I told him anything correspondence-wise is going to, the contractor needs to be copied to the bonding company. So.
And we do have a budget run coming up, and since we signed the final change order, we're, we still owing money, me, you know, not including the five percent retainers, there would still be a payment to make to him. I really don't have, you know, unless you guys tell me to hold it, you know, I was planning on going ahead and paying that, because there's nothing really at this point holding us back.
If he's got contractors he owes, or suppliers he owes, over and above the retainedage, then I would hold it.
I would check with Jill, I don't know legally we can, um, and I, I don't know pro or-
Okay, if we don't have the lien waivers, we hold it till we get the lien waiver, five percent.
If we give him a deadline, no, that's what the bonds are for. If he's got people out there, that's not bad.
Okay, I understand that then, that's, I'm fine with that.
We can make a demand, make a demand on the bond that these people have not been paid.
Part of it is, we don't know who all's got money that's owed for. So, we can get lien waivers that we know of, I mean, even if you're building a house and you go to the bank with your lien waivers, you, hell, if you don't have the one for the ten thousand dollar iron fence that you're putting up, and all of a sudden, they come to the bank saying, "Hey, we gotta lien on this house too now."
My concern on that is, is that since we kinda let him out of finishing it, have we released the liability of the bonding company?
No, they're still on the hook, as far as I know. Again, we may wanna talk to Jill about that, but, and they're still on the hook for what the work he did.
Everything, it's like a normal project, we just cut it off early.
I'm with Jeff, I don't pay him a dime till he gives us everything, so.
Check with Jill and make sure-
If he has to have the money before he get the lien waivers, which makes sense, then we'll make arrangements to sit down at the table with him and trade the checks for the lien waivers right there, whoever wants to.
If we didn't know otherwise, I mean, I would be paying this payment up to, holding the five percent if we didn't know otherwise, so.
But we know otherwise.
Right, but contractually, I don't know that that's, you know, a basis for holding a payment. Yeah, I guess it could be, you know, it might be, it's a legal thing that I don't, I don't have the answer for. But, if we wanna just hold off, I mean, I'd have to process this and get it paid out and get it to Joyce by the end of the week, so.
Well, to me, that's, to me, that's always part of every contract, is turning in, you know, lien waiver for materials. Um, you know, and he's done, so, and he's just, take care of that, and I don't care if he has to borrow money to do it or whatever, but he's got to turn in the lien waivers, so, um, I mean, otherwise, you don't have any protection at all.
Yeah. No, it, it, like I said, for any correspondence, that we're gonna get the bonding company involved and just bring them on board.
But you're saying that the bonding company would then have to pay all the, the bills? And then that becomes a problem for Tom, because he's probably got his house or his farm on his collateral.
I think it's a, yeah, ultimately, the bonding company's on, could be everybody. The question is, and then we won't release the five percent until he gives us lien waivers, so really, the project's never gonna be closed out. And so, the only thing that, that could come back is say, okay, let's say he falsified something, or, you know, there's something out there we didn't know about, you know, six months down the road, so-and-so calls and say, "Hey, I didn't get paid, what's going on here?" Like, crap, we paid out the five percent retained, we're done. Bonding company, that's where it's-
Oh, yeah, I mean, you could have all kinds of employees that he didn't pay or whatever too, so. I don't know, figure it out, I mean, I, I just wanna make sure that we can still go after the bonding company, since we kinda let him out of completing the project.
That's why I was, uh, when we talked about it earlier, is setting a deadline, so, you know, we need all the stuff in by such and such date, uh, to give him a deadline so we get a resolution to this whole matter. Uh, and like I said, copy the bonding company, and if he doesn't stand up, you know, we'll go to the bonding company and make demand there. I just don't wanna see anybody not get paid that was part of the project, you know, they entered into it in good faith, so.
We, uh, in Frog Hollow, we held the retainedage. They went bankrupt before we had paid out everything, and they couldn't supply the lien waivers, so we held the retainedage. Kind of be, in this case, the same thing, I guess.
Well, and that's where I, you know, we've had this discussion before, I don't think five percent is enough. I don't know legally what you can do, but I think ten percent is more, you know, hey, we're gonna hold it. We pay every two weeks, right? I mean, there's nobody that pays every two weeks.
It's been five percent since well before my time. The city does ten. I don't have a problem doing ten.
We did ten at one point, it was a long time ago.
We, when I first came up here, we reduced it to something when we were doing Business Fifty.
Yes, because it was like a four million dollar job, and I'm like, the, the chance that we could have a little bit of a smaller contractor on it, I don't wanna be holding that much money at the end.
Right.
So, we took it down to one percent. I took the same document and used that on Frog Hollow and forgot to change it back to five.
Oh, okay.
Well, I was gonna mention that, I think it kinda depends on the project too, we can look at each one of them, and-
Right, but I mean, so, so I guess, I guess my thing is, is that, you know, obviously, guys know when they bid a project that, and you see it all the time, you put a big mobilization charge in there and your, you know, prices drop. So, I mean, so you mobilize and there's fifty grand bill. So, so they pad it up front, but also too, they're used to dealing with MoDOT or the city or whatever that pays monthly versus every two weeks. I mean, we're processing payments pretty quick, so, you know, the money's rolling so that they can make payroll and pay their materials and everything else too, so it's a little different, but.
I know, we've discussed, anytime we do a project that has federal funds through MoDOT, we cannot hold any retainedage. Or can we have a warranty? Which I don't like at all, but that's just why, so we, is that, we're a little more careful on when we say the project's closed out.
And do you have to pay, is there a prompt pay deal through Fed or the state or something?
There might be something along those lines, but we're never, we never have problem with it, we're paying it two weeks.
I think there is a prompt pay in there, I think even in our contracts, we, we have a clause in there, if they're not paid, there's so much interest paid.
Yeah.
But they have to probably give you lien waivers every time they turn in a pay estimate or something too, though, so. I mean, you're always paying in the rear, so you should be good. Should be good, but.
Nothing's a hundred percent.
No, you're right, so.
Anything else?
Yeah, so, I mean, five percent on a hundred thousand dollar job ain't much money, so, I mean, so, there's just not, not much teeth there, I mean, somebody could say, "Forget it." But, that's happened so far.
Got two projects to bid on Friday, and I know I gotta sit down, it doesn't want long, we wanna change it on that.
And probably both of those are probably about, what, a hundred or less?
Yeah. Probably safe to do that, if we're moving in that direction.
I mean, I just, I'm okay with moving forward, I mean, you're gonna get a little, probably a smaller contractor on both those, or, who knows, I don't know how busy everybody is, but, I mean, obviously, you guys are watching the work all the time, and so, I don't really have a problem with it. I mean, the problem with those two is that they're stormwater, and they get a pipe set or something, and it's not secure, and a bigger hand comes in, that sucker could go downstream. Are there those boxes? Put a concrete pipe or-
The one on Shear's a metal pipe. It'll have a flared end section on it.
They have a drop bin later.
Drop bin later, yeah, it's got all kinds of stuff. I mean, once it's backfilled, everything will be fine, it's just, so.
Most of the contractors are watching that too, because they don't wanna, they don't wanna go downstream and retrieve their pipe, so.
Usually, it does, it's not very good shape either.
Yeah. It's usually made, like, I can still remember that Highway Fifty job out there when they by militia, they had that trench down there, and they had rerodder about that big, and laid it all down, the three footer, yeah, too. They don't like those types either.
Okay.
So, leave it at five on these two, and then we'll address it over the remainder of this year.
I think so.
Okay. That's fine.
Depending on bids to get in Friday, I'll probably be up next week trying to get a little more work so we can get them done yet this year.
Get them done while it's hot.
It'll be dry.
Good idea. Okay.
Anything else?
Vacation's nice, wish it was longer.
Yeah. Oh, I'm gonna be staying in recess up four-thirty.
All favor?
Aight.
Fairness.
The husband and the kids, I seen-